Pledge of Allegiance. Is that on?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to our June 7th meeting. This is on, right? You guys, yeah. We have some new equipment, so getting used to it. Please note the council's in full attendance. And our first item on our agenda, excuse me, is items from council. Anyone have anything?
One little thing. There's a real bad manhole on Juan Lynn, right off of Puerto Vaca Highway. It's holding water now, so I don't know if it's, that there's problems there, or it's already sunk in, so I have to dodge it. Okay?
I have one item, real quick. And Lynn, you're probably...
Poor Lynn.
Just a real quick update on Sabine Street. I noticed the construction there and... And I, okay. Just if it's, when's it gonna be complete? And then remind me, is that, that's just the first phase and we're gonna work our way through that whole neighborhood?
Yes, sir. The Sabine Street, they're in the process of installing the base right now, and they've got probably about an 80%, 90% of it complete. And we're hoping to get it sealed with the first course, July 4th. And then Trinity is out for advertisement right now, which is the next street in line for the rehab portion. And Brazza Street, the utilities, is under design and will be advertised in the next couple of weeks.
So that's about a six or seven years to get all the way to the Business 59?
Yes, sir. Seven years total.
Seven years. And so you were right. City manager told me she thought it was seven years, so streets, excuse me, utilities, then the next year do the street. And is all the curb and gutter over there being replaced, or is this just the worst part?
It's all of it. It's, it's in such condition that you have to replace it all.
It looks really good. Matter of fact, I'd probably gotten their way driving through there looking around, so...
It's, they're getting, they're getting real close.
Okay. Very good. Okay, it's good to see that.
Can I follow up on that, real quick? San Antonio Street, Guadalupe Street, it's gonna be a while before they get there, because those are closer to Rio Grande.
Yes, sir.
Those streets are in very bad shape, and I'm wondering if we're gonna have to live with that until we get there in three to five years? Because we gotta do something, I think, especially that one that goes to the hospital, to D-TAR. God, that street is, is in pretty bad shape. Be nice if we could do a little bit of...
We can maybe do, we'll look at it and see if there's some maintenance or something we can do. I can't, I wouldn't recommend jumping that street ahead because the utilities gotta go first and you wanna build those sewer lines from the top down.
No, I understand that. I'm not trying to change the phase of the project, but I'm just saying, those are gonna be the latter streaks.
They are, yes, sir.
And they're already in very bad shape, so it would be nice if we could go do a little bit of maintenance or repair.
We'll look at it and see if we can do something.
Thank you.
Speaking of maintenance and repair, I just wanna thank you or whoever in the department. Tibballetti down by Hayek has had some leveling and it made it a lot easier to make the turn, so, thank you.
Mr. Short, while you're there.
(laughing).
Update on the neighborhood across from Victoria, Victoria East.
Meadow Creek.
Meadow Creek.
Oh, Meadow Creek. We are, of course, we've had rain delays right now. There has been some hot mix, cold lay level up done and some more seal coat done, but we're not, they're not complete yet. Hopefully, the rain'll hold off and they can get back at it this week. We lost last week, basically, all of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? If not, we'll move into citizens' communication and please just state your name and address for the record. And out of respect for everybody, try to limit your comments to at least five minutes.
Everybody, we're controlled.
I'm Ernie Byrd. Live right outside of Victoria, but I've got a business here in Victoria. I was here five weeks ago, I guess, and, and jumped Ms. Garrett pretty good about those trees that never did get cut down that I went to see her about. And I went and talked to the enforcement people the day before I came up here, and they took all the information down again, and it's been five weeks now or whatever, and none of the limbs have been cut. Does anybody know anything, what's going on about that, or do you know anything about it, Ms. Garrett, or...
I don't, Mr. Byrd, but I'll be glad to get an answer for you and call you tomorrow.
Okay, but I mean, what's been wrong with the last five weeks or whatever? Anyway, I brought my dog here last time just to prove how easy it was to get a contractor's license in the city of Victoria. And everybody was real nice in here and everything, but afterwards, went outside and Paul Palosik was sitting on a bench, and I waited for him to get through talking with somebody else, and I went over to him and just showed him my dog's certificate, and had Spanky Bird on there. And, and I was being nice to him, and I just said, "I just wanted you to see how easy it was." And he said, "Well..." And I said, "And there's, you don't have to have insurance, bond, or any..." "Oh, yes, you do." He, you know, he said stuff like this and that, "You just swap that over from your name to his name." And, and I didn't do that. You don't have to have anything. You don't have to have a bond. You don't have to have insurance. You don't have to be able to read a tape measure. You don't have to know anything. And these people that get their stuff worked on, they think it's pretty impressive when somebody comes up, you know, with a contractor's license from the city of Victoria. They think it's pretty impressive that they probably have insurance and bonded and all that, and they don't. And that's why so many people are getting messed around. And I think it needs to be a little tougher to get one. Well, things got kind of a heated argument, and our mayor really pretty well started baiting me to hit him. I'll swear on a stack of bibles. And it gave me a good idea. The chief of police was right there and the, he would say stuff to me where, out of their ear, where they couldn't hear, and then he'd deny it when I'd mention it. And so I came up with an idea, since he's real athletic and everything, and I'm a fat old man, maybe we have a little boxing fundraiser between me and Paul. And just to raise money for charity. And he's real athletic. He can probably whip me right quick, you know, but I don't know. But I'd like to raise money for the Boys and Girls Club, maybe the riding stables over there, and a few other places. And, you know, if he wants somebody to hit him, I'm, I'm ready in a, in a, something like that, something that's legal. I know Mitt Romney even fought one of the boxing champs, you know, after he got beaten election to raise money. And I don't see what's wrong with this. If, if he wants people, if he wants to be rude to people when, I mean, he's nice when all of y'all are around with TV cameras on him. And you'd be surprised, the people that I've told about this. Huh?
I was there.
You were here?
I was there.
When?
Last time. That you're talking about, what you're saying is not true.
What, what is not true?
You're typifying it totally different.
Mr. Alpasca, let, let's not debate.
I'm not supposed to engage.
Thank you.
You got your chance to talk.
I don't remember seeing you there. I remember seeing Mr. Alvarez there and, and the chief of police there and a couple deputies there. But I wasn't trying to get him to fight. He was just being rude to me as he could be. So, I don't know. I don't know if he'll accept or not, but we can take quite a while setting it up. You wanna take five or six months to set it up? We can raise a lot of money for charity. But I guess I'll wait on answers since you're not even doing anything, you know? So, I guess that's all I got to say. But, except, you weren't right there when me and him were talking. You weren't, there wasn't anybody around. Somebody else had left. Mr. Halapaska, I don't know. I know you like to spend all our taxpayers' money, but I thought you were a good guy before this. You may have just heard some of the other things or something, but I don't know. Want you, well, ask the chief of police or them, if I, I wasn't trying to start any fight, but they were trying to kinda keep it away. And I was even told by one person that, that you were trying to bait me to hit him and, and that you've done that several times before.
Mr. Byrd, you could conclude your remarks. That would be great, since the five minutes, so...
My time's up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for listening.
All right. Citizens' communication still open for anyone else who'd like to come forward. Thank you.
Bonnie Fortenberry, 603 New Haven. I missed last month, last meeting, but I did see it on TV. I wanted to thank Mr. Alvarez personally, was one of the main reasons that I came through here today, because he did take time and come out to the house the next day following the meeting and looked at our roads. They're still not wonderful. Yes, they're still working on them, and yes, they are working today, but they've still got problems. And Ms. Garrett, you made a comment in last meeting that we needed to be patient, that it had only been two months. This has been going on since middle of February. But I did wanna thank Mr. Short and Mr. Gill also because of the educational thing that they did last week, last meeting, on what the clear coat was, what it, if we'd had all that information beforehand, some of these problems would not have been coming out like this. And I did thank them this evening for that. And Mr. Palosik, we, your comment also was that the city doesn't have a money tree. I'm aware of that. It doesn't grow in my backyard either. But we needed to do the five Ps. Prior planning prevents poor production, and that's what I think we've gotten out there on that street, even to this point, with the ones that are finished. Back in the back part of the neighborhood is not bad, but there's still lots of loose rock. They haven't come through. Your city sweepers came through, and the only reason I know that is because I saw where they'd been, but we, nobody moved their cars. They, we didn't know that that was gonna happen. Not in front of my house, but in front of the other houses, I could see where the sweepers had come and made the in and out, trying to get in between the cars and all the, the trashcans and things. So we just, you know, that back section of Meadow Creek is Heritage Manor, and it's only 23 years old. We've, we were one of the original owners back there. So, you know, those streets really, they were bad, but they weren't that bad, but it's not gonna get any better with the rain. You should see what some of it looks like now with, after the rain had come through. But I did want to thank Mr. Alvarez for coming by. He's not even my councilman, but he did stop, have the, the nicety to come by and stop and, and visit with my husband and I. And if anybody'd like to ride to see how rough those roads are, I've got a motorcycle that can take you, and I've got plenty of equipment. I would love for you to ride because it shows how really poor that road is. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizens' communication still open?
Jill Trevino, 116 Blue Rock Court. I'm Jill Trevino, and I am one of the five candidates who has applied for a position on the Planning Commission. I just wanted to come forward and introduce myself, give you a face to go with the piece of paper and qualifications. So, that was all. I just wanted to introduce myself and show you that I'm interested and that I have the initiative to come forth and, and do so. Thanks.
Okay. Citizens' communication still open. Seeing no one come forward, we'll go ahead and close citizens' communication, and we do have one ordinance with the public hearing, so, Mr. Gush?
That is an ordinance granting to Centerpoint Energy Resources Corporation, due in business as Centerpoint Energy Texas Gas Operation. Excuse me. The right privilege and franchise to construct, install, extend, remove, replace, abandon, operate, and maintain its facilities within the public rights and way of the city of Victoria, Texas for the transportation, delivery, sale, and distribution of natural gas, containing provisions related to the foregoing subject, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and do the public hearing first. We'll open the public hearing on C1. If you wanna speak to this item alone, this would be the time to come forward now. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve item C1.
Second.
Motion is second. Are there any questions or discussions?
I have one. Are we gonna have to sign this form, like, multiple times here?
No, sir. I believe that is just for us to fill out who attended, and then it'll be signed by the secret city secretary when it's done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, passes. Consent agenda.
There are two items on the consent agenda tonight. They are first, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting from May 17, 2016, and second, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary for the transfer of ownership of expired personal protective equipment that may no longer be used by the city of Victoria Fire Department to the Texas A&amp;M Forest Help, Forest Service Helping Hands Program and declaring an effective date.
Do we adopt consent agenda items one and two?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, the items passed. Now we'll move into our resolutions.
Resolution E1 is a resolution appointing three new members and reappointing two current members to the Planning Commission and declaring an effective date. And mayor, this resolution, as we've done in the past, has blanks in it that we need to fill in tonight by naming names to those positions.
Counsel, I guess the first question, the, you can look on E1. There are three names. There are two that wish to be reappointed. We could, we could decide to go, let those two continue, unless there was some objection, and we just vote for the one, Mr. Rashid, who's ineligible. Is that what y'all, so we need to do?
Split the vote between the two reapportments and three new appointments.
No, go ahead. I, I was suggesting we reappoint Mr. Woods and Mr. Hayek, and then vote on the position that's vacant.
Motion for them?
You also have two vacant, you have two additional vacancies due to individuals that term is, Ms. Lucy Herrera needs to be replaced.
Okay.
And Mr. Kanecky needs to be replaced, and Omar Rashid needs to be replaced.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm...
So you've got five total slots.
So we need to vote for three.
If you choose to replace the two that, that want to be reappointed, you have three vacancies.
Yeah.
And one vacancy, Mr. Rashid's, and Mr. Hayek and Mr. Woods would not go into effect till August, but the two that are current, filling unexpired terms will go into effect upon the resolution, so...
Okay.
But we're taking care of it all in one night.
Because they missed the meetings, okay. Thank you for that.
Mrs. Herrera resigned to run for city council.
Okay.
Can I have my question? You want to split the vote?
At this point, I think what we need to do is get consensus from council or a vote on whether or not to reappoint John Hayek and Bruce Woods. We already have their names penciled in on the resolution because there was prior discussion about reappointing them. As long as we're okay with that, then we would go through the balloting process one slot at a time.
Fill in those.
To, to fill the remaining three positions.
Since Ms. Herrera was recently appointed and resigned to run for council, I know she's not in, one of these in our packet. Has she been contacted? Is that someone else to consider, or do we just not do that?
Oh, no, she's currently running for council, so she's not eligible to be appointed right now.
I'm sorry. We just finished an election, too.
I understand.
Sorry, Mr. Alvarez. Never mind.
But I'd also like to note here that these, each of these terms is different because of the length of time left.
Yes, sir, and that's why I'd like to do them one blank at a time.
Okay.
So we'll have three separate elections?
That's right. I've got a stack of ballots.
Is that acceptable?
My assistant asked me today if 56 of them would be enough for tonight. I think we...
For every possible outcome, but we're all in agreeance?
Yes.
So we'll, we'll pick from the applications that were given, and you did have Mr. Atkinson, last minute one left here on your desk. Okay.
That's right.
Very good.
I'm good with Mr. Hayek and Mr. Woods.
I am, too.
Yes. Okay. So we're in agreement there. Okay.
Okay. So we'll start with the first blank in the resolution, which is the expired term, Ms. Herrera's term, excuse me, no. Anyway, the expired term, which will not expire again until August of 2019. So the person that we're voting on now would be in office until 2019.
So you're replacing Omar Rashid's spot on this ballot?
Thank you. Please remember to put a number one at the top of your ballot, as well as your name or initials, so that we know who is voting here. As I always remind the audience, these are not secret ballots. They are entered into the historical records of the city, and they are always available if anyone cares to request them.
We add that last name.
Mr. Atkinson.
Mr. Atkinson is a name that you can write in if you'd prefer. We have extra blanks at the bottom always, in case we have a write-in candidate at the end.
Yes, yes, yes.
Tom's still working on his.
And just vote for one, right?
Yes.
That's correct, please.
If you don't get it on your first choice, we'll be filling two other spots, so...
Thank you. We'll tally those right quick.
Are there any other candidates here on Mr. Trevino came? Did anyone else? Because I don't know some of the people. I guess not.
All right, this is why we have runoffs. We have a three-way tie. There was one vote for Gail Hod, two for James Johnson, two for Jill Trevino, and two for Michael Atkinson. So what we're going to do now is have a runoff. Council has previously expressed a desire to have elections by majority, and with a tie, we have to revote one way or the other. So we'll have a runoff now. I'll ask you to number this ballot number two. And again, put your name in the blank where, where your name is, and this time you're choosing between only James Johnson, Jill Trevino, or Michael Atkinson.
All the pressure's on you, Thomas, so...
Well, you aren't gonna believe this. We have a three-way split, three, two, two. Three votes for Ms. Trevino, two votes each for James Johnson and Michael Atkinson. Council has previously expressed a desire to elect by majority, which would mean that we have a runoff between the top two vote-getters. In this case, the top three vote-getters, which is the same vote that we just had. So mayor, council members, we probably need direction about how to handle this situation.
I would suggest we vote for the, Mr. Johnson got the most, leave him on, and let's have a vote between the two second-place people.
No, Ms. Trevino got the most.
Ms. Trevino, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Let's have a vote between Mr. Johnson and Mr. Atkinson in order to determine who will be on the runoff ballot with Ms. Trevino.
Can I make a different suggestion? But I don't know if this would be...
You may.
Could we elect two people on this ballot? Could we have two votes on this coming ballot?
From a legal standpoint, the answer's yes. It comes down to what council wants to get.
I'm getting a head.
Just take the top two for the first two positions?
How about taking all three of them?
I would say two.
And be done with it.
That would save time.
That's a thought.
What are the three names again? Just real quick?
That would be Jill, Jill Trevino, James Johnson, and Michael Atkinson.
I'm with me.
Sort of depends on if you were thinking of just one.
Again, that's up to you. We were considering this to be the, the complete term, and Ms. Trevino has the highest number of votes, so I think it makes sense that her name be put in that blank.
Right.
And then it comes down to y'all's recommendation or vote to determine who gets the longer term.
But heads or tails on the two?
His, his recommendation actually is valid in the election code. You guys, as politicians, probably all know this, but for the benefit of the audience who may have thought that was a flippant remark, the election code actually says that if it comes down to a tie vote, there can be a, a game of chance to determine.
Well, wait a second. Let me look at something here.
The terms aren't the same?
No.
Where were the terms on the...
One expires in 2017, one expires in 2018.
Oh, I see it.
So we could seriously flip a coin? Because we need to make that decision yet.
Can I make a suggestion? Mr. Atkinson, on his application, filled out Planning Commission. Mr. Johnson, on his application, filled out a couple of different spots. Perhaps we might put him on the shorter term and think about him for other positions in the future.
Is that okay to do?
I prefer a flip of the coin.
I'm sorry?
I'd just flip it. I've seen these applications come through where they, they wanna participate in anything that we have an opening for, and...
Who's got a quarter?
Anybody have a coin? I don't carry change anymore.
I'm sure I do.
Throw it out there.
Advantage of a purse.
We need the accountant to come review.
Here we go. Here, we have a coin. All right, we're gonna do this like they do at the Super Bowl, mayor. You'll notice this has a head side, which is George Washington, and a tail side, which in this case is the state of California.
So I'm calling it? For who, for who? Let's talk about...
Let's, let's decide how we're going to do that.
You do the names.
If it comes up heads, who gets to be in the 2018 term?
We're the names.
And here they are. Let's decide how we're gonna set this up.
Okay, so Mr. Johnson can be heads and Mr. Atkinson can be tails. Agreed?
Yep.
No problem with that.
Is that, so, wait a minute, wait a minute. So the first person will get the first slot, the 2018...
The 2018 slot. All right, so heads is Mr. Johnson.
Heads, Mr. Johnson, and tails...
And I'm gonna try to make this land here on the table, and I failed.
Redo.
Redo. The mayor said redo, so we will redo so that it stays on the table.
All right, what is it?
That is tails.
Okay, so Mr. Atkinson gets the longer of the two terms?
Mr. Atkinson gets put into the blank for the 2018 term.
Okay. Anybody wanna see the coin? Any, no?
I'll lock it back.
All right. Well...
So Mr. Atkinson's term will expire in August of 2018. Mr. Johnson's term will expire in August of 2017. And I have to say, I did not expect to be flipping a coin.
Now, we'll need a, we'll need a motion to approve now that we have the names in on that item, so...
Make a motion to approve item E1 with Ms. Trevino as the August 2019 expiration date, Mr. Atkinson as the August 2018 expiration, and Mr. Johnson as the August 2017.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second, and just, you know, it was a little, that was a little jovial. It's fun. We've never been able to, or had to flip a coin, but it doesn't diminish from the seriousness of this, and, and thank you to these applicants and Ms. Trevino. Thank you for being here. It does help when you show that much interest. The Planning Commission is an important group, okay? It really is. So they sometimes have to make hard decisions for those of you who've served on the Planning Commission. So thank you to everyone who's applied. Any further comment?
Yes, I'd like to remind you, a lot of members of council may not remember, there have been many a time when we had to go out begging for people to serve on these well-paid commissions, and they paid nothing.
Right.
And that we have such a group of citizens wanting to do some civic duty is quite commendable, And I'm sure happy about that.
Well said. Okay. No further comment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign opposed? Okay, item passes. Thank you, council. E2?
Item E2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Fifth Amendment to the interlocal agreement between the City of Victoria and Victoria County for the provision of fire, rescue, health, animal control, and library services, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt. Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve item E2.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. Are there any questions?
Mr. Neal is here tonight. If you'd like to come up so everybody can see. I think you got to meet everybody, but Derek...
Almost.
Derek Neal is new to our community and the new director at the Health Department, and we're excited about having him here.
Good evening, council.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
And was glad to meet you before the meeting, so look forward to talking to you more often.
Yeah, I do want to mention that Charmel has been extremely gracious in hosting. She actually was one of my unofficial screeners, my interviewer. So one of my goals for the Health District is for us to achieve accreditation, and I wanted to share that with the council. But the larger picture is I've never been successful unless we had great partners. So I really look at the City of Victoria as the heart of Victoria County. So I'm really looking forward to establish some good relationships for the, really for the benefit of our citizens. So I look forward to working with each of you in the coming years.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any questions?
Well, Mr. Neal, so I'm to understand that we're okay with this, these changes, these amendments? They meet with your recommendations?
Fine with the changes, and I'm really pleased to see them because what it does is it distinguishes all of the roles, not only that of the Health Authority, the Medical Director, and the Director of the Health Department, which is my role, but it also gives clear guidance to the board, the Advisory Board. And I worked under a similar structure with the City of Abilene before I came here. So it works well for me, and it fall, it really complements the state protocol in terms of how we report incidents. And having lived through the Ebola algorithm in the Dallas area, this is really going to benefit our community from a holistic perspective. So the answer to that is yes.
Good, because that was the kind of the bigger question, you not being here to answer last time this came up, including that the county had also signed off on it. I see where the county has.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Counsel? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we had a motion. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, opposed, same sign? All right, a motion, item passes. Thank you. E3?
Item E3 is to discuss and approve a resolution approving the optional redemption of the City of Victoria, Texas Pass Through Toll Revenue and Limited Tax Bonds of Series 2011, maturing on August 15, 2029, calling such maturity for early redemption, and approving and authorizing the execution and performance of all documents and procedures thereto.
I move to adopt.
Motion second. Andrew, did you want to?
Yes, Mayor.
Give a synopsis.
Allow me, just a quick background on this. This is part of the agreement with TechDOT on this particular infrastructure that the city improved. They will reimburse us annually. So this is the second, if you remember, last year about this time we were in front of you to... Really, we're calling in the longer end of the bonds as we have excess funds. And you may be wondering, well, where's the excess funds coming from? That agreement with TechDOT is on an annual basis. They reimburse us for the prior year, so for the prior calendar year, based on, it's an equation that's in the contract itself, number of miles, traffic count generates a dollar amount. So they'll pay us an amount annually, plus we have a separate agreement with the county. So we take those two portions, make the debt service payment that's due, plan for the next one, and then any excess funds, we look at the maturity schedule and say, let's go ahead and call in the back end of these bonds. So we're just shrinking the maturity length of these bonds, and hopefully we'll be back year after year to get these paid off. Probably in, looking at probably 11-year payoff versus our normal 20-year.
So we're not, the excess funds are going towards paying the latter years. We're not using that for other purposes?
And that was part of the original plan when we entered into the agreement.
So the revenue side of the thing, I understand the TechDOT, but the county? Explain just for all of us here, the reimbursement for the county. How's that work?
Well, they're just, they pay us annually, and we just take that, we couple that with the TechDOT funds.
Okay.
Make the debt service payment. We look at what's left and anticipate, because we get it in normally January, February timeframe on both those payments. And we have February and August debt service payments. So we want to make sure we cover anything that's due before the next payments would come in.
So part of that original agreement, which I mean, it's been a few years, quite a few years, I don't remember it all, it was just there.
Ten or so.
That was how they were going to contribute directly, and we issued the debt.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Very good. Counsel, any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? E4?
E4 is a resolution approving the purchase of three medical supply vending machines for use by the Victoria Fire Department Emergency Medical Services Personnel from Apex Supply Chain Technologies LLC for their low bid of $29,671, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and annual data management agreement, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second. Chief, did you want to?
This is a, first, thanks for the opportunity to get up and speak this evening. This is a very new concept for us, and I think it's probably a new concept for our community as well. And so we'd like to take about three or four minutes and just kind of go over what this, what these machines are for and how we're going to use them. And I've asked our Assistant Chief Tracy Fox to come up and do a brief presentation. He's done a lot of the homework and preparation to move this plan forward. And hopefully that'll answer any questions that you might have about how the machines would work, so. Chief Fox?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity. We kind of chuckled. We have, everybody had a hard time understanding what this was. And when the chief sat back and started thinking about vending machine, I wonder what they're thinking. And we kind of concluded, everybody's probably thinking it's like a Coke or a candy vending machine, but we kind of wanted to explain that. Currently, we have four locations that we hold EMS supplies, our Fire Administration Building, one of our fire stations, and D.Tart Navarro ER and Citizens ER. As you can see, those are our locations. They're pretty disorganized, limited space, and they're not real consistent. Kind of the big problem with that is, one, understocking. We run out of supplies very quickly. And then there's others that we overstock. We have, because we have four different locations. We have, we spend a lot of money on supplies that we can have in all those locations. Another problem is expiring. Things expire quickly that we don't get to use because we have them on the shelf somewhere. And it takes a lot of work from our support specialist that is responsible for getting those places stocked. She has to make two or three trips at a time sometimes, just so she makes sure she gets the right supplies to where they need to be. And lastly, we have, we do not have a mechanism at this time to control that inventory as far as accounting, how much is used, when it was used, and who it was used by. So our solution is automated medical supply dispensing system. Once again, the term vending machine, and that's exactly what it is. The only difference is you don't put money in. You use your password, a PIN code, and you get to select the items, and we get to control that. Who can take what? This will 24/7 report back to us exactly what's used, who used it, and where it came from, where it was delivered. One of the other big benefits of this project, and we hope to see pretty soon, is that cost reduction. And we're shooting for a 10% cost reduction in our supplies just by, one, reducing the amount of locations that we have supplies, the reduction of stuff that expires on the shelf, and things like that nature, so. Here's just a real quick video and kind of shows it in action.
Meet the Edge 5000. A versatile, easy-to-use, easy-to-implement, and easy-to-afford automated dispensing machine by Apex Supply Chain Technologies, designed with your company in mind to save you both time and money. Here's how it works. At the machine, an employee enters their information on the keypad or an optional bat reader. The machine uses this information to control who gets what, how many, and how often. Each transaction is recorded in real time. As simple as that, you now have convenient control and visibility over all your supplies. A versatile device, the Edge features six shelves. The height and spacing of each shelf is completely adjustable and capable of holding up to 10 different products of varying shapes and sizes. Its time-tested helical system is reliable for mission-critical supplies and is easy to configure for new materials. The helixes can hold anywhere from five to 30 items in a space, depending on the item's size. And the Edge contains versatile dispensing modules, which are useful for dispensing common round items like batteries or spray cans. The Edge 5000's durable exterior is designed for any type of work environment. On site, the only thing the Edge needs is a simple hookup to electricity and an internet connection. The innovative brain behind the Edge 5000 is the Trajectory Enterprise technology platform. Apex's inventory control software. Trajectory is where transactions are recorded. Paired together, these two great technologies easily track, manage, and control your supplies. Automated reports, restock alerts, and order tickets are only a few of the completely customizable features available in Trajectory. With the Edge 5000 and Trajectory software, you'll soon wonder how you ever worked without them. Why manage your inventory any other way? Apex's solutions are easy to use, easy to...
Hope that helps a little bit understand the vending machine project. Any questions we can answer?
Tracy, would you explain typical supplies that'll be in the vending machine?
Oh, typical supplies? Yeah, excellent question. From our oxygen delivery devices like nasal cannula, non-breather medications will be in there. Just the basic things that we use pretty regularly, IV starting needles, catheters, IV fluids, things like that. Yes, sir.
What if it sticks?
What if it sticks?
Yeah.
We have access to it. We put all the medical supplies in there and adjust it and have full control over the stuff that goes in there.
What if the power's out?
The power's out? Well, they're located at the hospitals, and they have backup generators that will supply that. So the whole hospital will be out of power. And same thing at one of the facilities that will have it. And once again, we could always open the door if we have to. Yes, ma'am.
Why don't you just computerize, you know, just do a computer account of what you're doing right now? Why the vending machine and the additional expense?
Good question. Well, right now, the vending machine allows us to track exactly who's taking supplies and what unit it's going on and things like that, and they're just a much more efficient process. The time spent right now is just tremendous as what our support specialist has to spend just moving, literally moving the supplies. She had to track each one of those items. It'd be quite labor-intensive. We use thousands of supplies a week.
The security, I think I was thinking, this is more secure, because you're putting medications in there?
Correct. Nothing, not a controlled substance, but other medications. And this is 100% secured. Only, like I said, you have to have a key card access along with a PIN number to get an item out of there. So right now, we have manual locks on all of our supplies where a human error is always could forget to lock it, something like that, leave the door open, whereas this, this wouldn't happen. You'd have to have our authorization to get the supplies. Yes, ma'am.
Who is it that restocks? You said something about we, so it's something the city restocks?
Yes, ma'am. We own all the medical supplies, and we have those in a central location. And we have to take those supplies and outfit them at the different locations where these vending machines would be. So we have complete access and control over the supplies.
Tracy, can back up just a little bit. Both hospitals allow us to have a supply closet, in a sense, and that's something y'all went to a few years ago.
Correct, correct. We went, we went from five locations of medical supplies down to four. So we reduced that quantity there, and now we're looking to try to reduce that to three. So the hospitals of both agree to allow us to use space in their facility.
Hospitals aren't interested in ponying up and being part of our community from that standpoint?
Chief Greg's approaching about that. It's just something that historically they haven't done and haven't offered at this point, so.
Well, just because we're delivering their customers to them, I mean, anyway.
I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Alvarez?
We're buying these machines?
Yes, sir, we're buying these machines. Yes, sir.
But I understand, I'm seeing that there is a monthly management?
There's an annual, for lack of a better term, maintenance cost for the, as you saw in the video, the trajectory accounting software piece of it. That's what you're paying the ongoing cost for.
I don't remember in this current budget us discussing this, chief, buying this apparatus, these units. Did we? Am I forgetting?
No. Our plan was originally to do a lease option with this product built into our medical supply contract or account, if you will. We analyzed that, finance helped us analyze that, and we're looking at, if we went with that lease option over a five-year period, we were looking at roughly $50,000. Whereas that same, if we purchased, we're looking at around $32,000 over a five-year period of cost.
Have we determined what we're going to save by going this way?
What we're going to save? We're looking at initially a 10% reduction in our medical supply costs. So you're looking at $13,000 to $14,000 a year.
That's correct.
Very good.
Just by optimizing it, is what you're doing?
Just by optimizing it and reducing that stuff on the shelf and stuff that expires and things like that, waste.
I would imagine the life of this machine is quite long.
Yes.
It's pretty simple technology.
Simple technology.
It's just the software that's what...
The software is, yes.
Okay. Thank you. We did get a motion.
Any questions? More?
Okay. Thank you. Good discussion. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay. E4 passes. E5?
E5 is a resolution appointing members to the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund Committee and declaring an effective date.
We have two blanks there on E5, and we also have two applications. Everybody have those? They were emailed out, and then also copies were provided this evening to us.
Correct.
So the simplest option would be to accept those two hoteliers for three and four, and then...
That's correct. My recommendation would be that we accept all of those names. And if that does create a surplus in a couple of the lines on the resolution, we would put more than one name in there. It would create a committee of six people who are reviewing the applications and bringing back to council a recommendation for y'all's consideration.
I'll make a motion to... Or reappoint?
To reappoint, Vic Caldwell, George Matthews, Mike Rivera, and James Weirden.
And then add Alex Ordones and Raj Pancho. To the other two spots for the Hotel Occupancy Industry spots.
Second.
These two, one question quick. These two that we're adding, they're hotel representatives?
Yes, sir.
They're managers or employees as a...
One is a general manager. I understand Alex Ordones is the general manager of Fairfield Inn.
Okay.
And that Raj Pancho, and I apologize for mispronouncing the name, is owner of Comfort Inn and Suites.
Okay.
Good.
Motion is second. Any more questions on that? And when will this committee start work?
The applications are currently posted online for people to submit to the city before, by the end of this month, June 30. And so the committee will start meeting in early July to start reviewing those applications.
And that's for hot funds?
That's for hot funds. That's correct.
Mr. Bobo, did you get your question answered?
Yes.
The motion second, okay. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign? Okay, that passes.
E6 is a resolution approving an amendment to the tax abatement agreement with Caterpillar Incorporated to effect the cancellation of the agreement related to the addition of a product line manufacturing to its Victoria facility, authorizing the city manager to execute the amendment and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Motion second. Are there any questions? See some Caterpillar people in the audience. Welcome. Seeing no questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, item passes. Thank you.
Item E7 is a resolution awarding the 2015-16 striping project at various locations to Stripe Lines Incorporated for their low bid of $209,895.15, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions? Mr. Short, did you want to share anything with us?
I'm just here to answer questions.
This is year three of this plan.
That's correct.
One-third. Ms. Elise?
Yes, I noticed that in 2014, we had 24 miles that we striped, and now we're going down to 15. Is that because of the weather?
No, it's dependent on how many symbols and crosswalks are in those specific arterials. Those are pretty expensive to put down, much more expensive than just the straight lines. And so the amount we can do with the money we have is somewhat dependent on how many of those symbols and crosswalks there are.
I had one quick question, too. Any chance there'd be any money left over, or is this a pretty tight budget here? Is there any contingencies or anything else left?
Well, there was, there was 250,000 budgeted, and you can see this bid's 209, so there's some 40,000.
I would hope that you would look at Main Street at Rio Grande South. I've asked before, I've been told by many citizens, the dividing lines there, the striping, it's hard to understand which way to go left when you pass 700 Main or how to go straight. I have had conflicts with other cars in that stretch. I have had conflicts with other cars in that stretch from Rio Grande to North Street with people not knowing where they're at when, once they cross over, and I would hope that we could take some money and stripe that, that would be a little bit more with the arrows and the straight arrows, if you will, and the left turning arrow on the pavement to give a more definition of that section of road, if possible.
On Main Street? I think we've done that.
We've recently done that.
We've done that recently.
Whatever you did, I suggest you go look at it again, because it's still...
Ms. Solis brought it up, and then we did it.
Yeah, we did it, right there at 700 Main, center of that area.
Like what, in the last week or two, maybe?
No, it's been a couple months.
Because I still, if it's been in recent times, it's still hard, so our staff may know better, but I just almost had a car just hit me, you know, coming off, going on that far left to turn to north, they weren't turning to the left, they just kept on going straight, and, you know, I'm following them, and, you know, watching them, and they just veer right into, they're not understanding whatever's there.
I think, I think it's striped to standards, so...
Well, maybe some arrows or some other, something else, because it's not working, and I don't know, the striping did not seem to me recently that it's, it's standing out.
Well, there are a group of citizens that no amount of paint would fix them.
And they don't, those group...
Some of the folks that don't come downtown often, I know exactly what you're talking about.
I know what you're saying.
I'm used to it.
I know people that come down Main Street the wrong way all the time, too, you know, but again, I'm just saying if there's a little money left over in this budget...
Go over that spot again, huh? All right.
We'll be glad to look at it.
Point taken, I'm always careful right there, and I'm waiting, I can tell it's that person, oh, you're not familiar, and sure enough, they do exactly what you're saying, so.
You just had an accident on Main Street, like two streets down, or two blocks down, where people were confused, I don't know what the problem is.
Oh, well. Okay, any further questions on this item? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you. What's left?
Scarlett has on the agenda appointments for Mr. Alvarez, the committees that he's going off, that's kind of a making you aware, but we definitely need to reappoint the Victoria Health Facilities Corporation, which Mr. Alvarez is a member, but Dr. Young and Mr. Jalapaska, all three need to be, somebody needs to be reappointed on that committee, whether it's those two plus a new one, or it is a committee that doesn't meet.
Right, it's necessary, that one and the other one, the building board, it's necessary by law as a requirement of some covenant or bonds we did years ago, and has this one ever, Mr. Alvarez, have you ever met on this?
Please, I don't think so, I've never been notified of a meeting, so it's not a very hard committee to be on.
I was on it, I think, when I first, 10 years ago, and we met once, and there was some reason, some change in some law, but we did it right here, right after council meeting, three of us, and then we, anyway.
That sounds like a good one to volunteer for. I'll volunteer.
You picked up on that, okay.
Then pay, unfortunately. But I wanted to suggest, also, on the other ones, if time is not of essence, you might want to wait till a new council member comes on board, and the other one to take into consideration is the appraisal district appointment. That's a two-year term, which ends January 2018. What happened the last time we had a resignation from that board? Each entity, taxing entity recommends or sends a name for nomination, but the board of directors gets to pick, and it's, and the last occasion, they picked someone, decided a city representative and filled, to fill the unexpired term until it was up for reelection. My, what I, Mr. Halliburton, our chief appraiser, has indicated to me is that you, even if you're not serving as the elected official anymore, you can continue to serve until the term expires or ends, so it would be whatever pleasure y'all, I would continue to serve you at y'all's pleasure after I leave council, if that's what y'all would like.
Okay, okay. So really, before is right now, if no one has any disagreement with what Mr. Alvarez described, council members need to decide if they want to serve on one of these, at a later date, we can make that decision, do y'all want to just wait till after the election? Is there, Mr. Alvarez, is there anything in particular you could, I don't know how to phrase this, do without now, that you want to give to another, let it make a decision now, or does it matter to you? You really want to wait till a new person? We can.
I mean, the only two active organizations is the appraisal district, which is usually a monthly meeting.
Yep.
And the NPO, the Victoria Planning Organization, which is about eight meetings a year, it's pretty active. I would love to continue to serve until I'm done on both of those.
Okay.
The other two, there's, there's not a lot of activity there, the Regional Planning Commission and the Housing Finance Corporation, you know, I think there's one meeting a year for the Regional Planning Commission that I'm aware of.
Now...
I'm on that one.
You're on, yes, ma'am.
But you're on the board.
It's different, the board meets how often?
We meet once a month.
Okay, and so your general, Mr. Alvarez, General Assembly, once a year? Okay, and then the housing finances, just like the health one, it never meets, unless needed.
Put me on that one.
Okay.
I'm interested in the planning organization at such time as there's an opening.
Okay.
You know, if we decide to wait till the new council person comes, that's, that's fine, but...
Talking about the NPO?
Yes.
Okay, so really, tonight, the one decision we've made is, Ms. Scott, you would do the Health Facilities Development Corporation Board? You agree to that? Do we need to bring that back for a vote? You'll bring a resolution back on that one?
Yes.
The others, keep considering? Mr. Jalapaska, you have a puzzled look on your face.
No, no, I was just going to report that in 12 years, we've never met.
Which one?
The health facilities.
I thought, maybe I was on the housing and met once, maybe, I thought I was on the health one, too, see, that's pretty bad, I don't remember, but they're necessary to have, so, okay, any further business? Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
Well, I can make a few announcements.
Okay.
We hope to have Riverside open Thursday morning.
Yeah.
The Generals does, do have a game tomorrow night, and so Parks is going to, Parks is going to work with the Generals on getting fans into the game and out, so the zoo, of course, has been closed, golf course has been closed, so, but we'll get everybody open back up on Thursday, and they'll start spraying for mosquitoes soon, I think tomorrow, maybe. John, do you remember what? Yeah, tomorrow, so I'm sure that'll be a question we'll start getting, and the community center splash pad is open to the public, even though we weren't able to have our ribbon cutting, we went ahead and opened it up anyway, didn't want to wait until we could do a ribbon cutting, and I'm not sure we'll even get a ribbon cutting done, so, but it's open and being used.
And our next meeting is the 19th?
The 20th, thank you, Jeff, that'll be our first budget work session on Monday, the 20th.
There's a couple that week, right?
The regular meeting is the 21st, so we'll also do budget work sessions that night.
Okay.
Okay, very good, anything?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, 5 o'clock here.
Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.